Hi, hi everybody. How are you all?
Evening everyone. You look good, Mr. Sherman.
Thank you.
Please. You know, see now, this is the moment when a guy's career comes to a crashing end, but I'm going to avoid it, thank you.
Okay, no problem. It's a virtual kiss, that's all.
Yeah, okay. I thought, you know, I did find a very comfortable pillow to sit upon this evening, so this, this helps my cause quite a bit.
How are you feeling?
Yeah, you know, like I got beat up, but better, getting better. It's just not, I think we talked about this, when I was thirteen, I remember what it was like to recover from surgery in a nanosecond. It's not gonna be that quick this time. So, but doing well.
Never forget, you never forget what surgery on a joint is like.
Tell me. Yeah. I, I'll be honest with you, it's even, and Cheryl will get a kick out of this, I would say it's even tougher than my heart surgery.
Really?
Yeah.
What did you have? What surgery did you have?
A total hip replacement.
Oh, okay.
And I, I was, had very little pain with the heart surgery, except for one weird spot in the back. They, when they do the surgery, Larry, they kind of fold you up like a pretzel, so they can get the correct angle. At least when Mark was doing that microsurgery, I mean, that's what he did. That kind of pinched a nerve in the back, and that, that hurt like the devil for a couple of weeks, but... But other than that, like, they give you the pillow to hold, and if you coughed, I never really felt any great discomfort. And, 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 you know, I was reasonably good health, reasonably good health going in.
That's cool.
Yeah, like I said, this is, this is just... It's learning from scratch to rewalk, you know what I'm saying? It's not a more or less pick up where you left off, it's starting all over, but, you know, we're doing good.
When did you have it done?
A week on the eleventh, so ten, eleven days ago or something.
Okay.
So...
My hubby's gonna have some knee surgery next month.
Well, the man on the other end of this conversation is the one to talk to you about that.
Yeah. Is he having a replacement, Cheryl, or is he?
Yes, yes, he's got bone on bone arthritis.
Good luck, good luck with that.
Did you have knee surgery?
I've had, yeah, I had reconstructive knee surgery a long time ago, and now that's my good knee, and the other knee needs a replacement. So... I got the neezles, as they say.
Fifty, fifty, fifty-two years ago, I had some surgery on my left knee. All they did at the time was just went in, took out a little loose cartridge and got out. Which is, which was what they did at the time. Like I said, literally, the next morning, the intern came to, to show me how to use the crutches they delivered overnight, and I was already up and down the halls with it, so...
Wow.
Now, that didn't happen this time, but...
No. How long did they say it's gonna take you?
Well, he's optimistic. He, uh, he said despite the, he said, "It's pretty state of the art." He, he think, his, his words to me, "You're gonna feel rough until one morning you wake up and all of a sudden it comes together."
Oh, okay.
You know, he said, "It's just, there's just nothing to be done about it." He said, "You know, the, the new parts and the old parts gotta get, uh, used to each other." And until they do, uh, they don't, and then when they do, you'll be fine. So, I'm up to about, a couple of weeks before the surgery, I was doing two mile walks, I'm now doing three hundred yards, and so it's a bit of a shock, but...
Yeah, but that was good that you were exercising.
Yeah, that helped, so...
Is that you, Bob, stumbling along on the sidewalk?
Yeah, that was me, the splat out there, yeah, with the chalk outline and stuff, yeah, that would be me.
You, you didn't see me zoom by you and my bike that fixed up?
Well, I, I saw you just missed by an inch kicking me, but I wasn't gonna say anything.
No. I felt sorry for you, so I pulled it back.
Yeah, some mercy drive by, thanks.
Yeah. Everybody have a nice Father's Day, for the Fathers.
Yeah.
Good.
Cheryl could have had a nice Father's Day too, but...
Kinda, yeah.
I did have a nice Father's Day, actually. It was beautiful, I guess, right?
Well, it's about as good as it gets, so... Spoke with your dad the other day, by the way, Larry.
Yeah, how's he, how did he sound to you?
I didn't know there was a question, no, he sounded fine, he was, he was wondering how I was doing, and, uh... So, we, we, we discussed surgical procedures, which is, I guess, what you do after a certain age. Isn't that right, Dave?
Yeah. Me?
I just had to drag you under the bus with me, that's all.
You tried.
Hello?
Okay, does everybody here, I think all of council appears to be here. Great, welcome everyone. It is seven thirty-two, today is June twenty-second, this is a regularly scheduled council, regularly scheduled council meeting. Clerk, can you please take the roll call?
Yes. Councilman Bliss.
I'm here.
Councilman, Councilwoman Clark.
Here.
Councilman Corbett.
Present.
Mayor Protem Grassi.
I'm here.
Councilor Rorback.
I'm here.
Councilman Soltis.
Here.
Perfect, great, our invocation tonight will be led by Councilman Soltis, Mr. Soltis.
Thank you. Two parts, first, I want to take a moment of silence, please, in memory of all the African-American men who senselessly lost their lives from racially motivated death in law enforcement. Tonight, let us pray for courage and hope, a quote from Jeremiah, chapter twenty-nine, verse eleven. "Write all the plans that I have for you," declared the Lord, "plans for well-being and not for calamity, in order to give you a future and hope." I also want to read a quote from a man that I admired also, who was senselessly murdered, Robert Kennedy, who almost, who said, excuse me, who said almost fifty years ago, at University of Cape Town, South Africa, on June sixth, nineteen sixty-six. "It is from the numberless diverse acts of courage and belief that human history is shaped. Each time a man or woman stands up for an ideal, or acts to improve the lots of others, or strikes out against injustice, he sends forth a tiny ripple of hope, and crossing each other, from a million different centers of energy, and daring those ripples build a current, which can sweep down the mightiest walls of oppression and resistance." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Soltis, uh, we are gonna do the Pledge of Allegiance, if, stand if you can, please. Mr. Soltis, I'm gonna have you lead that, please.
Pledge allegiance?
Yes.
Do the flag of the United States.
The United States of America.
To the public.
Republic.
For which it stands. One nation.
One nation, under God. Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, uh, it's time to do the approval of the agenda, are there any additions or deletions tonight?
Your Honor.
Ms. Corbett?
Yeah, um, I, I'm sorry, Melissa, I don't have the number in front of me for what you want to add, but I believe, uh, we are deleting. F-one is currently on the agenda, is that correct, ma'am?
Yes.
Then I would so move.
Okay. All right, is there a second?
Mayor Protem.
Your Honor. Councilwoman Clark?
I'll support.
Thank you, there's been a motion and a support to delete F-one from the agenda, uh, is there discussion? Clerk, can you take a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grassi?
Yes.
Councilor Rorback?
Yes.
Councilman Soltis?
Yes.
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
All right, thank you, um, are there any additions tonight?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'm, I'm gonna, it's, it, I believe it was under D-four, I'm looking at you, Melissa, if you're nodding, yes. It's under D-four, and I'm gonna defer to you for the wording, ma'am.
It is an inter-local agreement with Oakland County and Madison Heights for election services.
Yeah, so moved, Your Honor.
All right, thank you, is there support?
Your Honor.
Ms. Rorback?
I support.
Great, thank you, there's been a motion and a second to add D-four, is there any discussion? All right, clerk, can you please take a roll call vote?
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grassi?
Yes.
Councilor Rorback?
Yes.
Councilman Soltis?
Yes.
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Great, thank you, so we have deleted an item, and we have, I have added an item. All right, um, there are no public hearings this evening, uh, there's no agendas of items of interest and parties, so meeting is now open to the public. I'm gonna ask that, uh, everybody, we are going to do the best we can with Zoom to recognize everyone, so please be patient with us, ask that everyone who does speak, let us know who you are, and if you're representing a company or anything like that, or just yourself as a resident, and, uh, ask that you take three minutes, and is now open to the public.
I would like to say...
Josh West?
Yes. My name is Josh West, I'm an attorney. I represent, I appreciate the opportunity to appear, this is interesting how we're doing it via Zoom. But I appreciate the opportunity to speak on behalf of my client. My client is a company called Forty-seven East Ten Mile LLC, they own a building at that same address. They are in support of the ordinance that are being proposed, uh, G-one, two, three, and four on the agenda. They currently do not have the medical marijuana, or the, you know, the adult use hasn't been approved yet, but they don't have the medical licensing. I believe only two companies or two groups have been approved. But they're hoping that if this does pass, and there is a third license or licensees available, that, uh, they would be considered for it. They've got a coalition of a few gentlemen with strong ties, uh, one of our, the partners has been, grew up in Madison Heights, lived here all his life, and, uh, is very active in the community, so we, we are in support of those ordinances, and we're hoping that in the future, I understand that, or my understanding of the ordinance is, it still needs city council to allow for the application period to open at some point, and we're hoping that the city council will allow a third application in the near future, and we would certainly be applying for said application. I hope I said everything I had to say in three minutes, thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. West. Megan Futrelli has asked to speak next, Ms. Futrelli?
Yes, thank you, everyone, hello, and thank you for holding these meetings virtually to allow for community involvement during such an unprecedented time. My name is Megan Futrelli, and I've been a resident, a resident of Madison Heights since two thousand fifteen, when I moved back to Michigan from the Chicago area. I'm coming to you tonight as a resident, as well as a concerned citizen. As all of us watch the news and see events unfold, some of us are impacted differently by what we see in the protest rallies and movements across the US, and even here in Michigan locally. The fact is that all of us have bias, and that bias impacts how we navigate through our world. It doesn't make us bad people, what can turn negative is when we ignore these biases and/or act as if they don't exist. I truly believe that those are the best of intentions can cause the most harm, saying things like, "I don't see color," or "We are all one race, the human race," because those are meant to come from a place of good intent and acceptance. However, what it's really doing is minimizing the experiences based of someone based on their race or color. By not seeing someone's race or skin color, you aren't truly seeing them as a person. We need to start having open conversations that will be difficult, so that we can truly understand one another and become more united. In addition to being a resident of the south side of Madison Heights, I say that explicitly because I see a large disconnect between the north and south sides of our city. I serve as the chairperson for Madison Heights Youth Assistance as well. My son, who is biracial, serves as the youngest person in the county, as our student rep, and has received awards for his advocacy work. I share this because within our first week of living in Madison Heights, three Confederate flags that were not there when we moved in were showcased on our street. My son has been called the N-word by other Madison Heights residents, and has experienced tremendous conflict due to the color of his skin. Did I mention that he's only nine years old? I'm committed to serving the community I live in and the community at large, which is why I chose to become involved in the city after these events. My sole income is from a consulting firm I incorporated just over four years ago, focused on issues around social justice. We've grown to nearly thirty consultants and work with clients across the country because of our current events. Madison Heights is not unlike other cities across the state, however, I am asking that, just as we became a pioneer in other areas, like becoming a welcoming city, I would like to see Madison Heights do more work around bias and becoming more equitable and inclusive, both north and south of Gardenia. Bias is inherent in all of us and across identity groups. We all have preconceived notions around particular identity groups, whether it be men, women, rich, poor, black, white, Asian, gay, straight, immigrants, I could go on and on. I recognize that I only have a short period of time during public comment, but I would encourage you to watch my TEDx talk around implicit bias, and/or reach out for more information, I would love to share my thoughts and/or support Madison Heights in any way possible toward becoming a more equitable and inclusive society. So, thank you, um, and I hope that Madison Heights and the esteemed council listens to these comments and considers moving forward with welcoming and truly being inclusive of Madison Heights residents.
Thank you, thank you for that, and, and I'm sorry that your son had to go through that. Anybody else have anything they would like to say?
I would like, I would like to say something, my, my sound.
Okay, I can hear somebody, can you identify yourself, please?
Yes, um, my name is Harley Murdarsky.
I'm Harley.
Hi, um, I'm coming to you today as a constituent, uh, my family has been in Madison Heights for sixty-eight years, so some of you may know me, some of you may not. Um, but I'm zooming in today to weigh in my thoughts on having a special election for mayor. I also like to disclose I'm at work right now, so I apologize for any sounds in the background. Um, I recognize it's not an easy choice for council to decide who will lead this city as mayor, but as a constituent, I don't think tossing the ball back to us in a special election would be an appropriate act for council to do. The residents of Madison Heights have chosen this body to represent them and make challenging decisions like this, and I expect a decision to be made now instead of months from now. This is a situation where council may seem weak if they're not able to put the best interests of their residents ahead of their own agenda and make a decision. I'd also like to weigh in on a couple of other things while I have time. I think the most natural passing of the torch would be to Councilman Mark Bliss. We are in the midst of a global pandemic, a possible recession, and another civil rights movement. Right now, the city needs stability and a smooth transition, and Councilman Bliss has shown to be a more than competent candidate who would make that transition effortless for residents. When I met him, he was Mayor Protem Bliss, and both he and Mayor, former Mayor Hartwell volunteered their time to perform in Lampier's alumni show fundraiser. Later on, I became a student representative of the Arts Board, a board that was completely self-sustaining, and without Bliss's tenacity, it probably would not be here today. What I've learned about Mr. Bliss over the last few years is that he has a willingness to handle a variety of different concerns when it comes to residents. He has a proclivity for hard work and transparency, he is resourceful, and he strives to have Madison Heights live up to its motto, "The City of Progress." As someone who's a colleague, a mentor, a leader, and a fellow alumni from Lampier, I happily endorse Councilman Mark Bliss for this position, and that is what I will close with, because I have to get back to my shift, so with that, I yield.
May I go next?
Thank you, and, uh, Mr. Nadel, you are up next.
Good evening, good evening, everybody, uh, my name's Bill Nadel, and I am president of Interstate Auto Care in the wonderful city of Madison Heights, eternally proud. You guys know how much I care about the, um, the fantastic people that run this city, and, um, and I hardly couldn't, I couldn't say it any better than Harley. Harley took the words out of my mouth. Um, I think, uh, a special election, uh, would be to spend, what, twenty thousand dollars to have a special election, I think, is probably not the wisest thing, considering the, uh, the financial hardship that the city's already dealing with right now. Fully endorse, uh, Mark, I think Mark, uh, has shown himself over the years to be somebody that can bring sides together, and I think, in this political climate, I can... Anything more important than probably courage, I'll need to, to say about that, because Harley did, did it, and, um, and throw a little bit of context here. Um, I forgot the, uh, the, um, lady that was speaking just a few minutes ago here. My apologies, as an American, um, that we live in a country that's imperfect enough to do some things like this to a, to a nine-year-old. How in the world does a nine-year-old deserve something like that? And while I say that, I speak as an immigrant, and say, the context for that is, people still come to America and are willing to do this and then some, to deal with the stuff that we have to deal with. We are a country that is ever-evolving, the most diverse country in the history of human beings. How? When the world can we not expect that we're gonna have ignorant people among us, that we need to let them down and cancel them? That is the worst thing that we can have, because what we will have is we will have people radicalized on either side of the spectrum, and we, in the ninety-nine percent, the reasonable people, are going to be stuck in the middle of this. And so, my appeal is that we listen to people, and that we engage each other in, in civil discourse, and that we don't cower down to people that are, um, up to destruction and mayhem. No matter what the name of the organization is and, and what their stated intent is, the result is destruction, intimidation. And I, for one, did not immigrate to America to be told that this country is now going to turn into the place that my parents left. And so, that's all I'm gonna say for tonight, God bless everyone, thank you for having this meeting.
Thank you for your comments, is there anyone else who would like to speak, uh, this evening with public comment?
I do.
Sorry, Mo, DIA, Mo?
Yes, how you doing?
Hi, how are you?
Good, my name is Modi, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, I have been a longtime business and, uh, property owner in the city of Madison Heights. I want to thank the, uh, city council and the rest of the city officials for all the great work on both the medical ordinance and how, and now this is, this adult use ordinance. Although, I was one of the many qualified applicants who submitted, uh, for medical, but did not get selected. I have been waiting anxiously for the city to open up for another round of medical licenses, as well as to allow adult use licenses. Now, the city is moving forward with both. I am excited to start this next round in hopes of obtaining a license from both the city and the state. Before I finish, I just wanted to express my hope that the city will improve on its first round by revising the process to take more local factors into consideration, and set, and new submissions, round, and selection process in the timely manner. Thank you, and I am looking forward to speaking with more of you, and applying once the city starts accepting applications again. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, is there anyone else who would like to speak this evening? Andy Wakeling, please, go ahead, the floor is yours.
Counsel, thank you for listening to me. Um, I just wanted to speak really quickly on the, uh, mayor position as well. I've been a resident for longer than I can remember now, about, since oh-eight. I've been on the planning commission as the chair for, um, a long time as well, I wanna say about eight years. Anyway, um, I'm just hoping that council can come to some sort of an agreement and pick who that mayor is gonna... I'm just hoping that council can come to some sort of an agreement and pick who that mayor is going to be amongst themselves. I know it's going to be a tough decision. We have so many good people on the board, you know, some that come to mind, obviously, uh, Mr. Corbett, Ms. Grastine, and Mr. Bliss. I mean, obviously, you guys all have the background to do this, but I don't think that we should spend any extra money for a special election if we don't need to. All the people in the room in this room right here are the ones that really would be qualified for that position. Um, that being said, I, you know, I echo some of my other constituents thoughts and, you know, that Mr. Bliss, you know, started the Arts Board and the Technology Committee, and I, I will say I was actually kind of surprised by how well those did. So I know he has some excellent vision to see some boards that we hadn't had before and really
Right.
take them and run. So I'm definitely interested in seeing. I know I would be all for Mark taking over that position as mayor, but I know it's going to be a hard decision for council to make. And that's all I wanted to say tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Crystal Fox. Crystal, are you on there? You're on, you need to unmute. We can't hear you. We can't hear you. Perfect. We've got you now. Go ahead, please. No, we can't hear you. We still can't hear you. We can't hear you. You know what? I'm going to, I'm going to-
Her headphones, I think, are probably preventing her from hearing.
Okay, so I'm going to let her figure that out, and Cindy Holder was next. Crystal, we'll get back to you in a minute. We'll let you figure that out. Cindy Holder, are you available? Mrs. Holder?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now. Please go ahead. Floor is yours.
Actually, I had a couple of things to address. First of all, um, I actually agree with Mr. Wakelin and, and the couple of previous speakers. Um, I do believe that the city council needs to pick a mayoral replacement. I don't think that we should be having a special election. I think that we should put politics aside, pick the best candidate, and move on. This playing back and forth and playing politics is, is, um, really a bad look for the city. Um, who you guys pick is up to you. I did have a question, though, as far as Ms. Grastine goes. I want to know, did she ever sign the lawsuit release? Because of that would be huge um, people in the city and knowing whether or not I would want her considered. Um, second thing for Joshua Stan, um, Mo Dia, um, you need to follow the background, and it was all about contribution money. And if you didn't give enough, you didn't get high enough on the list. So if indeed they ever open this third one up and from what the, um, ex-mayor Brian Hartwell said last meeting, sounds like they have the next person picked already. They were talking about it was going to be a city person and have ties and yada yada. So, uh, the, the experience has been you didn't pay big enough to play the first time around and so you're probably not going to be in the game again. That's what the experience has taught me. So, um, put your big boy, big girl panties on. Pick a leader. That's your job. It's not to wait and force this into a special election. Um, if you have reasons not to support someone, pick someone that's neutral. That's my suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Holder, for your comments. Crystal Fox, can we try you again? We cannot hear you. Cannot hear you. Okay. All right, I'm going to try one more. Well, hold on, there's still people, so hold on. Um, next up, Sean Fleming. Sean, are you around? Would you like, John, if you would like to speak, we're Mr. Fleming, are you there?
Oh, yeah. Can you, can you guys hear me now?
Uh, really hard, can you?
Yeah, okay, is this better?
I'm turning up my volume.
Oh, that's okay.
Everyone, if you can't hear him, some, someone, someone send me a thumbs down. If you can't hear him, please go ahead.
All right. Um, okay, so I, I sent this, uh, I just want to talk about this letter that I sent to, um, to, to the city council, to, to all six members of city council in regards uh, to the Ackles Mobile Court, uh, if you're not familiar with, with where that is, that's, that's, um, right there at the corner of six, like seventy-five north and, uh, in that area, almost the, the bottom, the south, southeast corner of the city. And, uh, there's, I sent a map with that where you could see that, and it's, uh, it's a mobile park that is completely surrounded by the Green Zone. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't be saying anything about this except the fact that the new, the new primary caregiver marijuana grow overlay uh, and some information that was set upon it talked about uh, the possible, uh, public health and dangers, uh, from, um, the primary caregivers uh, that may not be able to afford uh, the, um, they, they wouldn't be able to afford, like, for instance, um, air filtration or, uh, things that a larger business would be able to do uh, to, to rectify possible contamination of air or other dangers that could be possible to, uh, ne- neighboring residential areas and, and, and such. So what I'm asking the council to do is to change the ordinance, uh, to include the, to change it so it would include the mobile, the mobile home parks. Uh, and I know they're not zone residential, but they could be, uh, there could be a writing where it would change uh, that ordinance to reflect that, that a business such as a, a primary caregiver uh, could not be so close to the mobile home park. Uh, and it would only be reflecting to this, to this one portion of the city that, that is so small anyways. But, but still, there's a lot of residents there that are kind of vulnerable to, to ha- being so close to the, uh, to, to a caregiver that would be, um, endangering them due to their, um, grow-up, according to the, uh, information that was put out. So that's, uh, what I would like to speak about that. That's, that's all for tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Fleming. Okay, uh, next up, Cheryl.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Can hear you now. Thank you. Please go ahead. You have the floor. Cheryl Murray.
I, I apologize. Um, I, I'm a little bit, uh, late to the game, so I'm not, uh, I'm not sure. What information do you need from me? I seem to recall, or?
Um, you're fine. Uh, we generally ask for name and address. Not everyone has done that this evening, but it's fine. We, Cheryl Murray, we know who you are, recognizing.
I, I caught a, a little bit of some of the other comments, and I, uh, want to agree with one, with some of the things that have been said regarding, uh, having a special election and making decisions, uh, amongst the city council. I think it would be, uh, in our benefit to not have the extra expenses that would go along with a special election. Uh, it's my understanding, it's, it's a substantial amount for the city, and I think that is money that can be spent elsewhere. Uh, I think that, uh, it would be in our benefit to have someone in the position who's been there a long time and has a proven track record. I think that that Mark Bliss would be a, a great option for that, so I think that, uh, if the city council can come to an agreement, I think that would be a really wise choice. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. There, uh, Jason Condit, would you like to speak?
Over on Corner Ave, um, wanted to echo the other, uh, people that, for, as far as the special election, that part I really don't care about. Twenty thousand dollars divided by our city residents, that's dropping the bucket if it has to go there. But I do want to throw my support behind Mark Bliss, and I can rehash all of the good things that he did, um, that everyone has mentioned. But I want you to take a look at the two people that benefited from his help and Councilwoman Clark and Rohrbach. Um, Mark had reached out to several people in the community and said, you know, we need to have more diversity on the, on the council, and we need to have more women as well. And one of the things he pointed out, uh, and for you, Councilwoman Clark, was your, um, arts acumen and how strong and, and he, and boy, was he right. You, you brought it. Um, and I noticed that you only, uh, won by a few votes, which, which made me even more glad that Mark had reached out and had me canvass on your behalf, because if we didn't have your artistic stuff brought in, my son does art. And just seeing the things that you brought, um, is, is proof that, 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 that Mark can see talent, can identify it, but I don't even think he really understood what you brought until you came on board. And Emily, uh, uh, Councilman Rohrbach, I'm really glad that we brought you on as well, uh, because you brought an even more caring heart. We had the one lady that talked about her son. I mean, we need more heart in, in the, in the council, and you guys have brought it. So this is why I think Mark needs to take over as mayor. And maybe someday, either one of these two ladies, you know, once they've had, you know, as many years in on council, I think they would be up for, for mayor as well at some point. And, and that's my time.
Great, thank you. Um, I, is there anybody else? Okay, I don't see anybody waving.
I'd like to say a few words.
Hi, Will?
Yes.
Hi.
Yes, hi.
Name and context of who you are, please, Will.
Yes, please. Okay, uh, hello, everyone. My name is Will Abad. I'm at forty-five East Ten Mile in Madison Heights. I am a licensed caregiver of medicine, uh, medicinal cannabis in Madison Heights and have years of experience managing and operating cannabis, cannabis dispensaries in Michigan. I would like to add that there are many hopeful business operators for dispensaries, including myself, who truly believe in the medicinal aspects of cannabis and not just the financial gains. Uh, though we are all aware that financially the revenues will help Madison Heights and the operators, of course, but it should give everyone a sense of satisfaction knowing that you have personally permitted an establishment to operate for the well-being of the locals and not just for the financial aspects alone. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Abad.
Sure.
Hey, is there anybody else who would like to speak?
Can you see my hand?
Uh, I hear somebody speaking.
This is Mary Bush. I've had my hand up for a little bit now.
I'm sorry, I haven't been able to see you. Ms. Bush, yes, I'm sorry, I still don't see you, but I hear you. So yes, please, go ahead. The floor is yours.
Well, I came tonight really to continue to support the, um, ordinances behind marijuana. Let you know that this retiree has got seven more days to work, and then I'm definitely getting some medical marijuana. So I, I'm hoping that the city continues that. But after listening to everybody, there's a good point that I want to make about the council's responsibility to elect a, a mayor prior to our next election. So right now, we've got three women and three men on city council. And Mark Bliss has done an amazing job leading the city. Um, and every single one of you could easily step in to taking over the responsibilities of mayor, every single one of you. But I want you to think about something. This city has an opportunity to continue with either white male-dominated patriarchy, continue as is, or one of the guys take a hit for the team and vote with the women and elect one of the women as the mayor for the temporary until the next election. And that would be history-making for the city of Madison Heights. But what it would take is one of you guys getting off your ego, either letting, you know, it slide yet one more time that we have a white male in charge, or one more time, maybe the guy saying, this is the time for women to stand up and take over and get the leadership experience that is needed so that they can continue on leading. Every single one of you. Roz, you've done a great job as Mayor Pro Tem. Dave Saltus, I don't always agree with you, but I know that you would never lead our city in harm's way. Bob Corbett, even with your achy old hip, you know, you're, you would do a fine job. Every single one of you would do a fine job as mayor. So do a little soul searching and get your jobs done and elect the next mayor, and don't leave it up to a twenty thousand dollar special election. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Um, I did not see her waving, so is there anybody else? I heard her speak. Is there anybody else that I have missed? Oh, yes, okay, Jennifer Taub. Yes, Jennifer, unmute yourself. You're up next.
I just want to say I also support Rosson for ma- mayor, so I've always found you to be, uh, knowledgeable, and you're very caring about this community. And I've enjoyed our conversations when I've seen you in the neighborhood, so just another vote for you.
Okay, thank you. Um, there anybody else who would like to speak? Anyone else who? Okay, I don't see anybody on my screen. If anyone sees somebody else going once, going twice. Okay. Thank you, everybody, for your comments tonight. They are appreciated. We are moving on to communications. There is nothing, so we are up to section D reports, uh, from the city manager. Uh, Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report regarding the resolution recognizing Arbor Day in the city of Madison Heights? You're, we can't hear you.
There you go. The city council's direction to increase our commitment and strengthen the city's tree canopy. The city staff is interested in applying to become Tree City USA. Tree City USA is a nationwide movement that provides a framework necessary for communities to manage and expand our public trees. One of the standards required for this application is that city council adopt the formal resolution proclaiming Arbor Day with a celebration. We originally had this planned for April, then it moved to May, then we ended up having it on June the sixth. So we would ask that on June the sixth, actually, we had a tree planting demonstration, a volunteer tree planting of thirty-two trees on Mulan, and we utilized the services of over twenty-four volunteers. So with that, I'm asking city council to adopt a formal resolution declaring our Arbor Day celebration in Madison Heights as June the sixth, twenty twenty.
All right, thank you. Uh, do I have a motion? What is the wish of council?
Your Honor.
This is Rohrbach.
I move that city council adopt a resolution declaring Arbor Day in Madison Heights as June sixth, twenty twenty.
Great, thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor Pro Tem Grastine.
Councilwoman Clark.
A second.
Thank you. There is a motion and a second to, uh, the resolution recognizing Arbor Day in the city of Madison Heights, June sixth. Is there any discussion? No discussion. Uh, clerk, can you please take a roll call?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem Grastine.
Yes.
Councilor Rohrbach. Yes. Councilman Saltus?
Yes.
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Motion passes six zero. Next up is, uh, item two under Reports Interlocal Agreement with Oakland County for CARES Act Funding Distribution. Mrs. Marsh, you have a report.
Oakland County received funding from the Federal CARES Act and will be distributing thirty million dollars of those funds to cities, villages, and townships, also known as CVTs, in the county. Distribution amounts are currently determined by eligible expenses and have not been allocated to each CVT. This interlocal agreement is required to ensure that Madison Heights is eligible to participate in this reimbursement. Staff and I recommend that city council approve this interlocal agreement between Oakland County and Madison House for federal CARES Act funding. The contract has been reviewed by legal counsel.
Great, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Mayor Pro Tem Grastine.
Councilwoman Clark.
I would like to make a motion to, for city council to approve this interlocal agreement between Oakland County and Madison Heights for the federal CARES Act funding.
Great, thank you. Is there a second? Your Honor. Council Rohrbach.
I second.
Great. Thank you. There's been a motion made and support. Is there any discussion? Okay. Uh, clerk, can you please take a vote? A roll call vote.
Councilor Rohrbach. Yes. Councilman Saltus.
Yes.
Councilman Bliss.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark.
Yes.
Councilman Corbett.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grassi.
Yes. All right. Thank you. That passes six zero. Next up, we have a report from the finance director for the fiscal year 2019, 20 budget amendments and carry forwards. Finance Director Kuna.
Uh, the state of Michigan's budget law requires that the budget amendments be approved by city council. The budget amendments are submitted to ensure that the fiscal year 2020 and fiscal year 2021 budgets are in compliance with state law. If the city council concurs with the amended amendments, city council should approve the implementation of these amendments and appropriate the necessary funds. This does require a super majority vote.
Okay. Thank you. And what is the wish of city council?
Mayor Protem Grassi.
Councilwoman Clark.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the implementation of these amendments and the appropriate necessary funds, which require a super majority vote.
Great. Thank you. Is there a second?
Your honor.
Madam Protem.
Mr. Corbett, was that you?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Corbett, for seconding. Their, uh, motion has been made and has been seconded. Is there any discussion regarding the budget amendments? Okay. Thank you. Clerk, can you please take a roll call vote?
Yes. And Councilman Saltus.
Yes.
Councilman Bliss.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark.
Yes.
Councilman Corbett.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grassi.
Yes.
Councilor Rohrbach.
Yes.
Okay. That passes, uh, six zero as well. Next up is item D four. This was what was added earlier this evening when we deleted the purchase. This is for the, uh, interlocal agreement with Oakland County for the election services. Mrs. Marsh, is there a report?
Yes, we were notified late Friday that Oakland County is, um, offering election services to process our absentee ballots with their high speed, um, processor that will eliminate F1, which council deleted from the agenda, which was a purchaser of a high, purchasing of a high speed processor. So we would ask that city council approve this interlocal agreement with Oakland County and Madison House for election services.
Great. Thank you.
Currently there, I'd like to add currently there is no cost for this service. There may be a cost. Not this time. So it's free.
Okay. Thank you for, for adding that. Uh, what is the wish of council?
Mr. Corbett, we can't hear you.
You know, I'm having that problem tonight. I apologize. It seems to be ticking on me anyway, or it could be the user error. Uh, I move that the council approve the, uh, interlocal agreement between Madison Heights and Oakland County for the providing of, uh, election services.
Great. Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor Protem Grassi.
Councilwoman Clark.
A second. Also, Mark Bliss's mic isn't muted, so I'm having a difficulty hearing.
Okay. Thank you. Um, is there, has there been a motion made and seconded? Is there any discussion? This motion regarding the election services? Okay, hearing none. Clerk, can you please take a roll call vote?
Councilman Bliss.
Yes.
Councilman Clark.
Yes.
Councilman Corbett.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grassi.
Yes.
Councilor Rohrbach.
Yes.
Councilman Saltus.
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Motion passes six zero. Next up, the ordinances. First ordinance is ordinance number 2159 to authorize a limited amount of adult use marijuana establishments. This is the second reading. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes. City staff was requested to adopt, uh, to draft a proposed ordinance amendment that would authorize and allow a limited number of adult use marijuana establishments in the city pursuant to the Michigan Regulatory Tax and Marijuana Act as amended and the marijuana regulatory agency adult use marijuana establishment emergency rules under the Administrative Procedures Act. Because the MRTMA and administrative rules provide that a license can be simultaneously licensed for both medical marijuana facilities and adult use establishments, which can all be located in the same location. The proposed adult use marijuana establish ordinance would authorize the two existing locations that have been approved for medical marijuana facilities to also include adult use marijuana establishments consisting of an adult use stacked class C grower, processor, and retailer to be vertically integrated at those same approved medical locations. This proposed amendment would also include the adding of one additional vertically integrated medical and adult use marijuana location in the city, identical to the two existing medical and adult use locations. Thus, the proposed adult use marijuana establishment ordinance, if approved by city council, would result in a total of three fully vertically integrated medical and adult use locations in the city, consistent with the two already approved existing locations and one additional location that would all be co-located. The potential third location would not be added until sometime in the future upon an appropriate resolution by city council to implement a new application period. This proposed ordinance is supported by the fact that under state law, for the first two years, the MRA can only accept applications for adult use marijuana retailers, marijuana processors, class B marijuana growers, and class C marijuana growers. Should the majority of city council desire to approve this proposed adult use marijuana establish ordinance, then an appropriate motion would be to adopt ordinance 2159 on second reading.
Great. Thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your honor.
Madam Protem.
Councilman Bliss.
Uh, yes, I move that we adopt ordinance 2159 on second reading.
Great. Thank you. Is there a second?
Your honor.
Council Rohrbach.
I second.
Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded to approve ordinance 2159 to authorize limited amount of adult use marijuana establishments on second reading. Is there discussion? Okay. Clerk, can you please take a roll call vote?
Yes. Councilwoman Clark.
Yes.
Councilman Corbett.
No.
Mayor Protem Grassi.
Yes.
Councilor Rohrbach.
Yes.
Councilman Saltus.
No.
Councilman Bliss.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes four two. Next up, ordinance 2160 to amend the number of allowed medical marijuana facilities. This is also the second reading. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes. Since council approved ordinance 2159, we also need to amend ordinance 2160, which would revise the medical marijuana facilities ordinance to allow for a third location. So first, this proposed ordinance amendment amends section seven dash 305D of the Code of Ordinances. This section establishes a set number of allowed medical marijuana facilities within the city and would have to be amended to change that number of medical marijuana facilities of adult use from two to three. In addition, section seven dash 308 C10 of the Code of Ordinances currently contains the community outreach provisions and scoring for the applicant's proposed plan outreach for educational services, charitable activity, community involvement, educational programs for cities, services, and residents. Based on our negotiated and executive community outreach agreements with the two currently provided medical marijuana locations, we are proposing a revision to this section so that it will reflect the same negotiated donations and community outreach for any new applicants. This is necessary to ensure consistency for new applications. Should a majority of council desire to approve this proposed medical marijuana facilities ordinance amendment, then the appropriate motion would be to adopt ordinance 2160 on second reading. And I would just state again, since you've already passed 2159, you have to have 2160 amended to put into effect 2159.
Great. Thank you. Uh, what is the wish of council?
Uh, your honor.
Mr. Bliss.
I move that we adopt ordinance 2160 on second reading.
Great. Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor Protem Grassi.
Councilwoman Clark. I believe she said I second. Um, all right. Is there a discussion? There are no discussion. Clerk, can you please take a, uh, roll call vote?
Councilman Corbett.
No.
Mayor Protem Grassi.
Yes.
Councilor Rohrbach.
Yes.
Councilman Saltus.
No.
Councilman Bliss.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Clark.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries four two. Next up, ordinance 2157, 2157, a zoning ordinance amendment to locate licenses and approved adult use marijuana. This is the first reading and we would also need to be scheduling a public hearing for our next council meeting, which is July 13th. What is the wish of council?
Can we read the report?
Please read the report.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Mrs. Marsh, can you please read your report? Apologies.
Part of the process of considering the adult use marijuana establishment ordinance, we've drafted two minor zoning ordinance amendments that will effectuate the adult use marijuana establishment ordinance. The planning commission considered these proposed zoning ordinance amendments on May the 27th and conducted the required public hearing on June the 16th. Pursuant to state law, city council, and charter, the planning commission makes a recommendation to city council regarding the zoning ordinance amendments, but ultimately city council determines whether or not to adopt the proposed zoning ordinance. On June the 16th, this planning commission moved to recommend that council adopt the proposed zoning ordinance amendments after it held the required public hearing. Should a majority of city council desire to approve this proposed zoning ordinance amendment, then the appropriate motion would be to adopt ordinance 2157 at first reading and schedule a second hearing and second reading and a public hearing of the proposed zoning ordinance for July the 13th.
Great. Thank you. Uh, and now I would like to ask, what is the wish of the council?
Mayor Protem Grassi.
Councilwoman Clark.
I would like to make a motion that council adopt the proposed zoning ordinance amendments um, after it holds the required public hearing for ordinance number 2157 to locate licenses and approved adult use marijuana on first reading.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Your honor.
Councilor Rohrbach.
I second.
Great. Thank you. There's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion regarding, uh, this amendment to locate the licenses of the approved adult use marijuana for the first reading and to schedule the public hearing for our next meeting, July 13th?
Your honor.
Mr. Sherman.
Um, I think that was the intent of the maker of the motion and support, but the motion was not stated in that manner. So the proper motion is to approve on first reading, schedule a second reading and a public hearing to be held on July 13th, 2020. Does the maker agree?
Yes, I agree. Thank you, Mr. Sherman.
Does the board agree?
Yes, I support agrees.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Is there any discussion in council? Okay, hearing none. Uh, clerk, can you please take a roll call vote?
Yes. Mayor Protem Grassi.
Yes.
Councilor Rohrbach.
Yes.
Councilman Saltus.
No.
Councilman Bliss.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark.
Yes.
Councilman Corbett.
Sorry, no.
Thank you. Uh, motion carries, um, four two. Next up, ordinance 2158 zoning ordinance amendment to locate medical marijuana caregiving caregiver growing operations. This is the first reading. Again, this would be, uh, as well, this would be a scheduled public hearing, uh, for the next meeting, July 13th. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes. On April the 27th, the Michigan Supreme Court issued a decision in the case of Deruder versus the township of Byron and held that municipalities may lawfully establish locations where medical marijuana caregivers must be located within a municipality. Prior to this decision, the relevant case law in Michigan had been that municipalities could not regulate or dictate where these caregivers could establish a grow operation within the municipality. Thus, prior to this recent Michigan Supreme Court decision, registered Michigan medical marijuana caregivers could essentially operate from any location they desired in a municipality in the state. Because the Michigan Supreme Court has ruled that municipalities can place limitations on where medical marijuana caregivers can cultivate marijuana within a municipality, we are presenting for your consideration a proposed zoning ordinance that restricts the locations of medical marijuana caregiver grows to the already established green zones in the city. The green zone map takes into consideration and is based on maintaining adequate separation distances from these areas, including school buildings, churches, family childcare homes, group childcare homes, and residential districts where residential units are located. This map is identical to the map approved by city council for medical marijuana facilities and is identical to the, the map that has been presented to city council in defining where adult use marijuana establishments can be located. In addition, the proposed amendment adds several other conditions that must be adhered to by caregivers if they locate to one of the approved parcels. These conditions are consistent with the, and complement the Medical Marijuana Act and are thus permissible conditions in the decision of Deruder versus the township of Byron. The planning commission considered this proposed zoning ordinance amendment on May the 27th and conducted the required public hearing on June the 16th. Pursuant to state law, city ordinance and charter, and the planning commission, they moved to recommend that council adopt the proposed zoning ordinance amendment after it held the required public hearing. Should the majority of city council desire to approve this proposed zoning ordinance amendment, the appropriate motion would be to adopt ordinance 2158 at first reading and schedule a second reading and public hearing of the proposed zoning ordinance amendment for July the 13th, 2020.
Great. Thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your honor.
Your honor.
Mrs. Rohrbach.
I move that council adopts ordinance 2158 at first reading and schedules a second reading and public hearing of the proposed zoning ordinance amendment for July 13th, 2020.
Great. Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor Protem Grassi.
Councilwoman Clark.
A second.
Great. Thank you. There's been a motion and a second to approve ordinance 2158 zoning ordinance amendment to locate medical marijuana caregiver growing operations. This is the first reading with a scheduled public hearing at our next meeting, July 13th. Is there any discussion?
Mayor Protem Grassi.
Councilwoman Clark.
I would love to discuss this. Very excited to see this on the agenda tonight. My husband and I own a business here in the city of Madison Heights. Um, we've already expanded once in the past two years and we're getting ready to look at another space possibly to purchase. And one of the biggest issues that we've fallen into is that these caregiver facilities are buying up all of the buildings in the downtown area and converting them into caregiver facilities that are multiple caregiver facilities. These buildings have to remain boarded up and they look like light and it diminishes the, the possibility of us being able to develop a downtown area in the way that every member here on council thinks that they want to do. So I'm really glad to see that this is on the agenda and that it's going to be hopefully moved into the green zone. Cause I'm very passionate about developing our downtown area and making sure that it's a fun, artsy, cool, safe place for all of our residents to live, work, and play.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wanted to, uh, make a comment? Any discussion from other council members?
Madam Protem.
Councilman Bliss.
Yes, um, this is an important ordinance for us and it's one that we didn't have access to before. Uh, until there was case law that came down from the Supreme Court that said that we could limit where those caregivers go. It was kind of a free for all. Uh, and so, you know, many people had commented to us about these facilities going up near, near parks, near schools, near residential. All the things that are our existing marijuana ordinances block with the use of the green zone map. Uh, we weren't able to legislate it. We weren't able to stop them from moving in, uh, but with that case. We weren't able to legislate it. We weren't able to stop them from moving in, but with that case coming in, we were now able to take it upon ourselves to be able to mirror our green zone map for these caregivers. And so to those watching at home, this is an important one. It's not about whether or not that there should be marijuana in the city. This vote is about these caregivers who were setting up shop without any approvals at all from our city that are now going to have to go through the right process and actually set up in areas within the green zone map as opposed to wherever the heck that they want. So it's a really good vote. I've I fully support it and I would urge all of my colleagues on council to support it as well and help us eliminate those caregivers from areas that we don't we don't want marijuana to be set up in.
Great, thank you. Is there any other discussion from other council members? Okay, so I just want to weigh in here as well. Ever since we started talking about doing some having some kind of medical or recreational or any kind of marijuana ordinance, people in the industry have contacted many of us on council and I had people contacting me. I had someone who actually contacted me and asked me, what is our ordinance regarding caregivers? And I said to them, this is prior to this, I said, there is no ordinance, you know, we we can't do anything. There is a there's something that is in the books right now and municipalities cannot do anything. Our hands are tied. And I said, I am a supporter of this industry, but not everywhere. We we need to have some kind of regulation on this. And as soon as we're allowed to regulate that, I'm going to be asking for this. So at the end of April, I saw an article. You know, it someone sent this to me. I was made aware of it and I contacted, I think I contacted our legal, our city attorney. I contacted maybe Mrs. Marsh, I can't remember, but somebody and I said, okay, there is now precedent. We can do something. What can we do? And the attorneys were working on it. They got on to it. Unfortunately, there's nothing we can do about the businesses that are in that are up now, but we can say that going forward, you have to be in the green zone. If you are doing anything with cannabis, you need to be in this zone. So I fully support this. No other, no other council comments. So Clark, can you please take a roll call vote?
Yes. Councilor Warback.
Yes.
Councilman Saltus.
Yes.
Councilman Bliss.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark. Councilman Corbett.
Yes.
Mayor Portam Grass team.
Yes, that passes six zero. Thank you, everyone. Next up ordinance two one six two amendment to the tree ordinance. This would be the first reading. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report? We can't hear you. We can't hear you.
There you go. As explained in D one above, at the direction of city council to increase our commitment and strengthen our our city's tree canopy, city staff is trying to apply for Tree City USA. In order to complete this application, the city needed to adopt a proclamation for Arbor Day, but we also needed to amend our current tree ordinance to update for today's standards and formally include the addition of a tree department. This tree department will be the Environmental Citizens Committee and or the Department of Public Services. There's a few other changes, but they're just minor wording changes within the ordinance. Steph and I recommend approval of ordinance two one six two on first reading.
Great, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your honor.
Counselor Warback.
I move that council approves ordinance two one six two on first reading.
Great, thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor Proton Grass team.
Councilwoman Clark.
I'll second.
Great, thank you. A motion has been made and seconded to approve on first reading ordinance number two one six two amendment to the tree ordinance. Is there any discussion? All right.
Go ahead. Your honor.
Yes.
I just want to say I, as somebody who is passionately supportive of our improving and restoring our urban tree canopy in Madison Heights, I'm thrilled that the city staff has taken this step. It's one of the things that I looked at when I was first decided to run for council and I'm just thrilled that it is finally coming to fruition. And, you know, this is an important step for Madison Heights because it really takes the commitment of the city and all of our residents to ensure that we are making a continued effort and steps along the way every year to improve our tree canopy and a really important thing for us to do. I appreciate it for for all of our residents. I appreciate it for my children and for everybody's children. And so thank you to city staff and thank you for everybody that is making this happen today.
Great, thank you. So in two thousand and seventeen, both Mrs. Warback and I ran on part of a platform of trees. We both recognized that this was an issue in the city and I got here first. It's just the way it happens, but I rebooted the Environmental Citizens Committee and we started looking at our different options and we brought in relief and there she was. Mrs. Warback was on relief. So she has really been involved in this since this close to the beginning and I have no doubt that had the tables been turned and she had gotten onto council that she at first she would have done similar. She would have started the Environmental Citizens Committee as well and she would have done something to get the trees in. So Mrs. Warback, thank you for all the work that you have done for this. I appreciate what you have done for us. Good job. So with that, if there's no more discussion, Clark, can you take a roll call vote, please?
Councilman Saltus.
Yes.
Councilman Bliss.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark.
Yes.
Councilman Corbett.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Grass team.
Yes.
Councilor Warback.
Yes.
Wonderful. That passes six zero. That is it for our business this evening. I think how there is no other business before us. Going to invite closing comments from council and as we traditionally do, I will go as if we are all here in this room. Mr. Corbett, I believe you are up first.
Excuse me, mayor. Mayor Proton. Can we do the minutes?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
These things. Okay, my apologies. Yes, minutes.
Your honor. Yes, I moved that the council approved the minutes, regular council meeting minutes of six eight twenty.
Great, thank you. Was there a second?
Since I was already unmuted, what the heck?
Is there a second?
Mayor Proton Grass team.
Councilwoman Clark.
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All right, Clark, can you please take a roll call vote?
Yes. Councilman Bliss.
Yo, Mark.
Then unmute.
Sorry, there was a leg. Yes.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Clark.
Yes.
Councilman Corbett.
Yes.
Mayor Tom Greystein.
Yes.
Councilor Warback.
Yes.
Councilman Saltus.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and now, Mr. Corbett, I invite your closing comments. It's good to see you.
Yeah, good to see you too, ma'am. Yes, I'm pleased to be here this evening as Ms. Bush earlier alluded to. I had some surgery about a week and a half ago, which I think I had mentioned before in my left hip, a hip replacement. And my previous orthopedic surgery was about a half a century ago, quite literally, and it also was a lot faster process. But I'm doing pretty good. I'm not doing my two miles every morning. I'm doing about three hundred yards, but we're getting there. And I'm very pleased to be with you tonight. And the only reason I had actually warned Ms. Marsh earlier that I might have to get up and leave at some point was a particularly comfy pillow that I found about two minutes before the meeting started. So other than that, good job and thank you very much for the calls and the notes that I received. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Mr. Bliss, you're next.
Yes, thank you. First and foremost, I'd like to wish a speedy recovery to Councilman Corbett and Mayor Proton Grass team. Hope, hope you're both ready to run, ready to run a five K pretty quickly. Love to see you back on your bike, Mayor Proto. And I think that this was a pretty productive meeting. This is probably the most ordinances that I've ever seen passed in in a meeting since I've been on council in seven years. We did it fast and part of that was because there was debate previously at first reading on a lot of these topics, but also part of it was because of how well written those ordinances were. And so I want to commend staff for all the time and effort that it took to be able to create those ordinances. A couple of them were pretty big and substantial and required a lot of legal work. So definite shout out to our legal team for that. Finally, I want to encourage people to enjoy the outdoors while you can. It is Michigan, so we're not going to give very much. I mean, it could snow in like two weeks and we don't know. So enjoy our parks. We've got a lot of great parks. We have signs and a lot of designations to kind of help you with your social distancing while you're at the parks. So, you know, do do yourself a favor this week and go for a walk at at Rosie's, at the nature center, at Civic or whatever park is down the street from your house. Make sure to enjoy the outside because, you know, bad weather is going to be around the corner here soon. That and road construction are probably the two biggest constants that you can get in Michigan. So definitely enjoy it while you can. That's it, your honor.
Great, thank you. Counselor Warback.
Good evening, everyone. First, I wanted to say I wish everybody a belated Happy Father's Day and and as I've got my earring because it's messing with my headphones. As, as Councilman Bliss just mentioned, the the parks are beautiful this time of year, so make sure you get out there and enjoy them. And right now we have a brand new park structure that many people might not realize. We are, I'm doing a grand opening ceremony for it this week, but Wildwood Park. If you haven't been there recently, it is amazing. We got a grant and replaced all of the equipment there and it is a gorgeous, gorgeous park. So take your kids out there and enjoy it, use some hand sanitizer and keep social distance afterwards, but it is, it's a fabulous park and I think everybody will be really enjoying it. And second or thirdly, you know, I am really proud to be a part of the city of progress of Madison Heights. And in the last several months, we have made a lot of progress and that's because really difficult conversations are being had and not just between those of us on city council, but very important conversations are being had in our society all across the board. And I appreciate those of you that came here tonight to to address that. I appreciate those residents that have felt in the past that the city has not always been receptive and and willing to admit and 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 change when changes need to be made. And so we're right now, I know right now, a lot of us are talking about and and trying to address some of the Nazi symbolism that is in a big part of our city and I appreciate that the it's not in a big part of our city. It's in one location on eleven mile. Our MC and I really want to say thank you to our police department for taking a stand and really addressing that issue because it is not a joke and it is not something that we can take take lightly or brush off as something that is just a symbol because symbols have meaning. I'm going to read something that I wrote this week and because as a Native American woman, I am a woman descended from a Jibway and Cherokee people who has who have felt years of oppression for, you know, since the founding of this country and before. My great grandmother and great great grandmother both spent time at Indian boarding schools where they were tried, they were, they were taken out of their culture and stripped of their their heritage. And so when I wrote a high school paper comparing Christopher Columbus to Hitler, I was told that I couldn't do that because he was a hero. He was a great man and he was an icon and things were different then. And then when I told the leadership at my beloved Christian youth camp that I didn't like that they sang a campfire song that had people dance like Indians and woo woo woo. I was told that it was just a silly song, so they're going to keep singing it. And those were formative moments for me. Those told me that the suffering of my people, think about the Trail of Tears, the 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 genocide of the Native American people in this country, those those things were a joke to people who said that they loved me. And but how the question is, how can we love people if we're okay with making light of symbols and things that have caused them pain and pain for their people? There's no empathy. There is no love in that and it's not okay. Not okay to keep using symbols and songs and venerating people that have caused human suffering. Just because it doesn't offend you doesn't mean it's not offensive. So it's about loving people around you, about hearing cries for justice and acting on it. And so I appreciate that now we are working hard to act on these cries for justice and I just I apologize for taking so long, but I am passionate about this and I think it is something that we just cannot stop. When we see statues and social constructs being struck down, we are need to ask ourselves, does this symbol or statue or this song or this logo or this mascot represent oppression and suffering, not for you, but for others, that it has to go. And so when we learn, we do better and we do better not just for ourselves, but we do better for all of us. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Never apologize for defending someone. You didn't take too much time doing that. You were fine. Mr. Sherman, any words you would like to add tonight?
Thank you, honor. First of all, I'm very glad that our council members are on the mend and I hope everyone had a wonderful Father's Day yesterday. I know I did. It's hard to believe with what's going on in the world that for the Fourth of July is already right around the corner and prior to our next regular council meeting. So I just want to wish all of our residents, council and family a safe and happy fourth. Thank you, honor.
Thank you. Mrs. Marsh, any comments this evening?
I have nothing.
Thank you. Clark, Mrs. Rotman.
Yes, I do. Thank you. Just want to let everybody know that the absentee applications are available in the city clerk's office for the August fourth primary election. So if you need an application and you haven't got one already, please call our office and we'd be happy to send you one or direct you online where to find one. I also want to do a reminder that all the voters in precinct ten will be voting at the John Page Middle School for the August election and those in precinct six, which is the Soulwick Madison Towers, will be voting at Madison Elementary. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Clark.
Hi, I got a couple of things. Um, thank you, everyone, for being here. It's incredible to see the numbers on this grow, grow, grow every week. I hope we're able to provide a live experience once we're indoors because having people, so many people involved has been great. I just want to address a couple of people who were able to speak out and public comment tonight. Mr. Josh West, he was an attorney for another client in the marijuana industry. I would love to meet your client in person. We've seen a lot of, we've seen a lot of the people from the medical marijuana industry, the recreational marijuana industry come out and introduce themselves to our residents and city council. I can't get the gist of who your client is based on his LLC name, so I would love to meet him personally and get an idea for what he's doing. I wasn't on city council when they chose the first licenses and when they picked the process to choose licenses. If I was, I would have loved to see some of these smaller businesses get a crack at it. I spoke with a gentleman named Eric. He's owner of Toyology Toys in Royal Oak and he wanted a shot at getting a space two and he fell in fourth place. I'd love to see the new licensing opportunity open up to maybe some smaller business. He's got a couple of real big players here in the city. So so that's kind of where I'm at on that. Megan, I would love to see your tech talk. If you could give us a link, if you could post it live on the Facebook feed so people can see it or message it to me personally, I'd or message it to me personally. I'd love to watch it and I want to make sure that, that our residents are able to get the opportunity to share that too. So if you could pass that along, I would love it. Everyone who came out to speak about the mayoral race. It is very point of contention here on city council. I haven't seen any conversations go on on Facebook. So I had no idea that so many residents knew what was going on inside of city council. So it's good to know that, that the conversations are happening out there. And I agree, I don't think that we need a special election. I think that the natural choice would be to move our mayor pro temp who was voted on by six other members of council to be our stand-in mayor to sort of take that seat until the next election. And I agree, Mark Bliss could probably win mayor if he ran for mayor, but I'd like to see our residents choose our mayor because that's, that's the mayor that we're going to be with. And I want our residents to pick who it is that they want to represent the leadership in this city. So there are more than one way to avoid a special election and that would all be for us to support one member of city council. We've had a lot of chaos in this city over the past year and I am brand new to city council this year and I got tossed right into the deep end in December. And Rosalyn Graffstein has proved to be a tremendous leader. Even Mayor Hartwell will attest to that. But she did a great job in dealing with electroplating services. She's done a great job working in COVID. She's planting firms and trees and pollinator plants all over the city. She's helping out with the emergency food pantry and I see her face literally everywhere I go, doing stuff all over the community. So what I would like to see is for all of our city council to support our mayor pro temp to move into that mayoral seat and to have a next natural election, pull Bob Bettings back in to fill that vacant seat and keep the tremendous team dynamic that we've been building over this past year. Cause I agree, we have a great council. I'd love to see it tracking along exactly how it is because we've made a lot of progress in a very little time. Um, the, so I also wanted to point out that there is a couple of events happening around the city revolving Black Lives Matter. Micah Cooper, who is a Liam Fair High School student, just hosted his first speech rally protest. And there was a couple dozen people there and him and two of his friends were able to speak their minds about the current climate of the country. I was in tears the entire time. It was one of the most motivational things I've ever seen. And you should have saw these kids faces light up when they saw the support of the adults and the other children in the room. It was just absolutely amazing. Micah is going to be doing more of these soapbox rallies, soapbox speech rallies throughout town. So please keep an eye out for what he's doing because he is going places and he has got passion and heart. And it's just amazing to watch him grow. Madison Heights Citizens United and the Madison Heights Anti-Racist Coalition were born from this movement here in our city. And these little communities on Facebook have been growing and growing and growing. Both organizations are working together along with other local city organizations to put together a town hall meeting to have a discussion about race. And I have just the details of that information here. So the event is going to be called Courageous, Courageous Conversations, a Town Hall on Race in Madison Heights. It's sponsored by Madison Heights Citizens United and you can find them on Facebook. They're already growing very big. It'll be from six thirty PM to nine PM Thursday, July ninth at the gazebo in front of city hall. So please join us there. You're encouraged to bring your own seat. Maybe we'll have a contest to see who can bring the most creative seat. We'll throw the arts board into that too. Um, they're going to have a short discussion by a diverse panel of residents and community leaders. So there are some set leaders to discuss, but they also like to open up a candid discussion forum to hear from the residents about their racial concerns. One of the things these groups is trying to find out is, is there racism in our city? Yes, of course there is. How do we approach it? What legislation in our city prevents equality amongst our residents? And what are the areas in our city that we can address to help make sure that we fill in the gaps of these disparities in our city and of course lead by example for our state and of course our country. So if you would like to be a part of that discussion, Thursday, July ninth, sponsored by Madison Heights Citizens United, it's called Courageous Conversations, a Town Hall on Race in Madison Heights. I'll be sharing this information through my Facebook too. So I appreciate. If you see it, you can share it with your friends and family as well. That's all I have for this evening. Mayor Proton Graffstein.
Thank you, Councilwoman Clark. Councilman Saltus.
Thank you, your honor. First of all, I want to thank Councilor Roebuck for sharing her story with everybody. That was quite heartfelt and such a tragedy experience. Thank you for that. Also, I, on a letter note, I, I fixed up my bike. I haven't fixed it, rode it in about 10 years. Went out and changed the inner tube and cleaned it up. And so I went riding. Oh my God, it's like, it's great feelings like a kid again or something. But so, so it's great to ride the bike down the streets and then into the, into the parks and, in the nature center too. And so I want to give a shout out for Councilors Roebuck and Graffstein for the trees because I'm seeing the trees on the, and the streets getting ready to be planted. And that's a great idea. It's going to look good. So thank you for all that. And that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Saltus, I wish you had gotten your bike ready earlier because I had surgery a week and a half ago on my foot and I won't be on my bike for a while, but I would have joined you. So we'll see. I, so first off, I want to thank everybody who has given me well wishes on my recovery. I've moved from a soft cast to a boot. This, similar to Mr. Corbett, well, maybe not quite as long ago. Mine was about a quarter century ago. I had surgery on my foot and the doctor said, you're probably going to need something down the road. And there was discussions and then COVID hit. And so once everything started opening up again, we got a spot and I was able to have surgery same day as Mr. Corbett sent him a picture. And I said, look, we're twins, but I guess it was a little bit different. But we are both right now dealing with our own mobility issues and I, I welcome going biking with you once I'm able to, but I don't know when that will be. So don't wait for me. Please enjoy it. There are so many places that you can, you can bike here. I, I go everywhere. I go shopping and, and it's great. What you need to get are these, they're called poneers. They're for the side of your bike. Everyone loves them. People will stop me and ask me about them. They're great. And then I lost one of them and someone found it. So that was good. But anyway, so yeah, good for you biking. It's great. I love biking. It just gets you everywhere. And there are so many places that you can, you can bike to here. Mrs. Roebuck, thank you for sharing your story. Please don't apologize and think that you took too long. One of the most important things that we do all of us on council is we speak for other people. And sometimes we speak from a personal experience. Sometimes we speak because of an experience from somebody that we know. But we are here to represent everyone. And you had a situation and you shared it. Do not apologize to that. To me, that was your bias as a woman. Oh no, maybe I better not say something. I don't want to take up space. Absolutely take up space and share and let people know. Few years ago, when I was on the Parks and Rec Board, there was a conversation about, I believe it was crosswalks and Mick Horner, who's no longer with us, was using a wheelchair and he made a comment about, I don't remember the exactly what it was, but it was about the slope and something. And he said, well, it's just me, you know, it doesn't really impact that many people. And I said to him, what I've just said to you, I said, absolutely, you need to advocate for other people. You are advocating. It's not something that I would recognize. It's not something I would realize as an able-bodied person crossing that there would be this issue. One of the things that I am realizing right now with, that I am realizing right now, because I do have my lack of mobility is how much I took for granted going for walks and going for bike rides and just leaving my house. I have to get down steps to get out of my house. So it's temporary and I'm grateful for the fact that it is temporary, but we need to recognize everything and we need to recognize all the bias that we see. I know Megan Futrelli's son. I know who he is. And he is an amazing person. Forget the fact that he's not even 10. You wouldn't know that from talking to him. He's an amazing kid. And not only is he an amazing kid, he's a role model, which I think is amazing because so often our role models are white or they're male or however it is, one of, one of the, the issues that I know is going on with the black community is that they don't have the same role models, you know, and this has been an issue since OJ. OJ Simpson's parents, his mother said to him, you're going to be famous for playing football or for, for committing a crime. Well, guess what? It was both. And that's really sad because there are so many African Americans who should be great role models and we should talk of more. Dr. Ben Carson comes to mind, obviously Martin Luther King. But Reese is actually a role model. I was talking to someone at his school who was a hugger and Reese is a hugger. And he ran over to me, this other child, and he gave me a big hug. And I said to him, you remind me of Reese. Do you know who that was? And the look on his face that I was comparing him to Reese. I know who Reese is. This was a great thing and we need to encourage this. We need to encourage this. We need to encourage all of our residents to speak up when we see an injustice and we need to do that as well. A few years ago, Councilman Saltus had a situation that he, he wanted us to speak up against an injustice that he saw. And he spoke up. He spoke up and he said something and not all of us did. And I'm conflicted on whether or not I should have. I did not support him and I agreed with him, but I did not support him. And I'm conflicted and I have been because there's also a fine line that we have to go with. But he spoke up. He saw something and he said, this is an injustice and I'm going to speak up. And we need people to do that. This event where I saw Reese, it was at the school and it was about anti-bullying. It was talking about bullying. And with everything going on right now, and there's so many different terms and you can use that term and you can't use that term. So much of it comes down to bullying. It's okay if we make fun of that person because they are only. And you can fill in the blanks there because they're Native American, because they're African American, because they're gay, because they are different. And it's not okay. And, and people need to stop bullying and we need to tell them that. We need to say no. We all need to do that. And we as women need to speak up. We are taught to be quiet. Don't say anything. Don't make a big fuss. Women are taught with self-defense, if someone is being too handsy, you just want to embarrass them. You just want to do something because they don't want the attention brought to themselves. So a woman's in that situation, someone gets handsy and don't do that. Don't touch me. She's the one who's made to feel embarrassed. No, it should be him. He shouldn't have been being handsy. Can pretty much guarantee she didn't start with that. She asked him several times. That's what happens with bullies. And we as a community need to stand up. We need to stand up to the bullies. I will get the link for that TED Talk. All right. I will get the link for the TED Talk. I don't know if it's something that we can post on the website, but I will get the link for that. I think it's important that we all recognize our bias and, and we all have biases. Everyone does. I'm Jewish. I'm white. So I look white because I am white, but I'm Jewish. And I'm not from here. I'm from Canada, which is next door. And so people say, well, it's not that big a difference, but I notice a lot of little differences that I hadn't noticed when I came here. And whether it's because I'm from Toronto as opposed to Chicago or New York, and I've moved to the metro Detroit area, I don't know, but I notice a lot of little things. And I get told, well, that's, that's just the way it is. Well, that may be the way it is, but that doesn't mean that it's right. It doesn't mean that it's right. So we need to be accepting if we are going to be an accepting community, if we are going to be a welcome community, if we are going to have people who come here. Not everyone who was born and born here stays here. And not everyone who lives here is from here. If we want to continue to bring people here and have our city grow, have businesses come here, we need to learn to be accepting. So I thank you everyone for your comments and I wish you all a safe and healthy July fourth or whatever holiday you are celebrating. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Good night.